All right, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, March 16th, and I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Board of the Electorate of the Wassa School District. At this time, I would like to open nominations for election of a chairperson for the special meeting. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate President Sunker.
Second.
Okay, with that, I will seek a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Everybody can vote, correct?
When it comes to the resolution.
Oh, okay, okay.
Everybody who's signed in. Is there anybody here as a resident who's not signed in to vote on the resolution? Everybody signed in? All right, we're good to go.
Okay, great, thank you. So we have closed nominations. And then I am seeking a motion for...
We've got the motion, we just need to vote, right? On chairperson?
Well, that was to close nominations. So then now it's a motion on the chairperson. So that would be me?
Yep, so we just need to vote on that one.
Okay. So I am seeking... But I need to seek a motion for that.
Yeah, I moved, and we had a second.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Close nominations was... Did we say anything else in the closure?
So we had my motion to nominate you as chairperson. We had a second. Then we had the motion to close. Now we're ready to vote.
Back to the motion. All right, so with that, I am... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. So I will now take over the meeting as chairperson. And I would like to designate Cassie Peck as Secretary of Meeting. Thank you. And I would like to designate two vote counters. And those two vote counters will be Dr. Hiltz and Clerk Peck. At this time, we will discuss and potentially take action to adopt a resolution on the purchase of district property. Do I have a call for a resolution? There is a resolution that has been presented. And the resolution is on here. So the resolution is posted up there on the screen. It's also on our sheets for those of us that have them. But I think before we seek this motion, is there any discussion? Because we have discussion allowed from all registered voters. Okay, so this is a motion to purchase property at the price of $125,000. And I'm not hearing any discussion on that. I'm not going to read the full motion because it is available here. So I'm going to call for the vote on the motion as is written. Is there a first and a second?
First, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, so... And this is something that everybody can vote on. So I am... Well, I'm sorry. All in favor of this motion as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Do we abstain if we don't live in the Wassa School District?
You're not a voter.
No, I'm ready.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so with that, that motion has been approved. And with that, then I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Just one moment while I get over to the next meeting, please. No problem. Not our shortest though. We've got shorter meetings on the record.
This one is just the board vote, right? Just the board votes in this one.
Taking action on the electorate. Okay, so it is 5:05 PM on Monday, March 16th, and I am calling to order a special meeting of the Board of Education. This has been agendized to start at either 5:15 PM or immediately following the previous meeting, which we just concluded. Okay, so at this time, we... The Board gives authorization to the administration to proceed to close on the purchase of the real property described in the stated motion. The purchase price of the property presented will not exceed $125,000. I will read this motion in full. So I am seeking a motion pursuant to the authority provided by the electorate at the special meeting of the electorate on March 16th, 2020. The Wassa School Board does hereby give notice to administration to proceed to closing on the purchase of property identified at the special meeting of the electorate on March 16th, 2020. Furthermore, the Board authorizes Robert Tess, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer, to execute the agreement of purchase and sale and all documents or instruments necessary or appropriate to effectuate the closing under the transactions contemplated by the agreement of purchase and sale. The southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 4, Township 27 North, Range 7 East, in the town of Mozzany, Marathon County, Wisconsin, excepting that part thereof described indeed recorded in the Office of the Register of Deeds for Marathon County, Wisconsin in micro record 318 on page 45. Tax parcel ID 058-2707-043-0997. The property is currently owned by Sarah's Timber LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. The purchase price of the property shall not exceed $125,000. And with this, we need a first and a second and a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trelle?
Yes.
Trisha Sunker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Okay, so with that, I'd like to call to order the... With that, it is 5:08 PM on Monday, March 16th. I'd like to call to order the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. First, I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public and student comment. It does not appear that we have any public or student comment tonight. So we will move on to Agenda Item 4. And this is the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report to be presented on staff wellness by Judy Lodal and Angie Lloyd.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present on Wellness Goal 2. Oh, I added the right way? See if it works. Turn it on, Michael.
There we go.
There we go. Wellness Goal 2 is all about improving staff wellness and relationships within the Wassa School District. What is going well? We're continuing to build upon our crisis prevention and intervention training, or our CPI training. So far, we have had 31 staff trained with the full course, which is nine hours. 162 staff participated in the refresher course for three hours, for a total of 193 staff members trained, or 15 buildings. Now, I'll tell you the number. Since we submitted this PowerPoint has increased, and we have only, I believe, two trainings remaining, and then the district has been trained. And we are emphasizing this year the coping model, where we're really emphasizing debriefing. And students and staff de-escalating the situation, taking care of yourself, debriefing afterwards, and also presenting more on rational detachment, staying in control of your own behavior, and not taking student behavior personally. That type of thing. So we are emphasizing those things. Where additionally, we're continuing with our new staff orientation meetings. Mike Immel, our Behavior Specialist, has presented to 96 new staff members. He is again really emphasizing the verbal de-escalation portion of that training, and then Act 1125.
Continuing with what's going well, we had a March 4th training for all administrators in the Wassa School District on Leader in Me, which you'll remember is the ACL curriculum that we adopted. That's a universal curriculum for grades kindergarten through 12th grade. We will have a training in June, hopefully, where we will have Leader in Me trainers come in and train our facilitators, who then will train all staff in August.
Our current status? We're going to continue with the crisis prevention and intervention training till we have all buildings in the district covered, and continue with Mr. Immel presenting at the new staff orientation trainings.
We also have two additional adolescent mental health trainings through our DOJ grants. Since this was submitted, they rescheduled to August. So we have two June trainings. And we will have 10% of our staff trained at that point. We also had our People's Services staff participate in a compassion fatigue training, and they brought strategies back to all of our buildings.
Barriers that we encounter? Time. Time is our greatest barrier that we foresee. Time to debrief after a crisis. Teachers are busy, parents are busy. That time to debrief. So time is an issue. And also time for training our staff. Parent professionals, they are busy. They work with staff while they're at school. And so our barrier is time.
We also are continuing to look for funding for our social emotional curriculum. So I've been soliciting funds through grants, and then we'll be looking to business partners for that as well. We do have what's called the measurable results assessment. It comes with our Leader in Me program. And we will give that to all staff, students, and parents in May to get baseline about where all of our buildings are with climate and culture. Again, we'll do the Leader in Me training with all staff and continue searching for the funding.
And we will continue with the new staff orientation training, CPI training, and continue to present the debriefing and stressing the coping model. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for us?
I guess just one. So this particular goal's increased by 6% yearly in the Climate and Culture Survey.
Which we don't have yet.
Right. Which we don't have. And it sounds like, unless I'm misinterpreting this, that this action of the crisis prevention intervention coping model, that's a strong focus of this particular goal of relationships and staff wellness. Are there other components to this? Because when I see wellness and relationships, student behavior and dealing with student behavior is one. But is there like other pieces to the puzzle for overall wellness?
For overall wellness? You know, with Act 118 coming in too, where they had made some changes to the restraint and seclusion law, there'll be some greater changes coming down the road. And I would... We'll be checking, but I'm sure the CPI Corporation will be responsive to that. There's... But at our current training, when it initially started, there wasn't this big focus on coping and debriefing and staff wellness. And that's a piece that we've really chosen to take on more this year and add to it and present these two pieces along with the verbal de-escalation. It's kind of been a process in the Wassa School District. As I've been here, I mean, we started with the CPI, and then restraint's a big thing. Then we had more emphasis on the verbal de-escalation. And now this year, we're kind of really working on that staff wellness piece.
And so again, I probably don't... I didn't ask my question the right way. What is it? Is there more to staff wellness than intervention of student behavior issues? And Carla and Tammy could probably speak to the...
Oh, I understand.
I didn't ask it right.
The staff wellness is built also in the People's Strand. And that's where we have our third party is more of the health basic component of wellness. In other words, we have the biometric screening. People are... We're looking for conditions, critical conditions, that haven't been diagnosed yet, or healthy habits in order to help people stay healthy. So that piece of it belongs to the People's Strand. And I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that's part of it. Because I mean typically, people... I mean, when you think of employee wellness, it encompasses not just what goes on in the school, but it could be making sure that there are employee assistance programs, documents and advertised, or certain counseling services.
We share that part of it.
Okay.
We have an EAP. And we also have built into our wellness program components of depression, if the people are dealing with that. There's a lot of mental health things for staff members, as well as the physical aspect.
Okay.
Our system's built more around the training part. It's staff need in order to do their job and feel like they can do it well.
Feel comfortable.
That's great. The only other question I have, and this is more out of curiosity than anything, is what grade levels do you typically see teachers most impacted by these student behavior issues that you would think would require, you know, the de-escalation and the kind of talking about it afterwards? Is it elementary? Is that typically where it is?
I see more at the elementary level. We're not as rural. When you look at our restraint and seclusion numbers, we're not going to restrain some child who's 16. They're just... They're too big, you know? There's different techniques, you know?
Tell me about it, I try it all the time.
But so where I see more of the restraint and seclusion tends to be at the younger age, where we're building those skill sets too. We're just... But that isn't the total sum. We're really working every day to build resilience, to build strategies, to work with these children. So as they move through the grades, there's a... You know, we don't see the same types of behaviors as we go all the way along.
So I just have a question about the barriers being encountered. Anytime we talk about barriers, how are we approaching finding solutions to those barriers? So I go to the next steps. And the biggest thing that I'm seeing here in two of the three is time. And it's not addressed in the next steps. Is this something? There's some creative thinking underway? Or this is just... Time is just... This is something that we are up against, and there's nothing we can do?
No, I mean, and it's kind of tied to money, too. Because anytime we have parent professionals doing learning outside of school hours, we have to pay them. So just to give you a good picture, if we're trying to bring in parent professionals for two days of training this coming August for Leader in Me, it's $70,000 to pay them. So it's not a small chunk of change that we're talking about. So that requires us to get creative and look for grants and other opportunities in order to make that possible.
However, we have this unique opportunity right now with the closing of schools. We are... And you'll hear more about this later, but we're really trying to get some of the training built into this time.
Great.
You know, so we can continue to employ and pay them. And you'll hear more about that later.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Going on to Agenda Item 5, Instructional Technology. John Muding has a presentation for us.
I'm back. I was here in November, and we did a real quick overview for you. And so I will show you a few more things, but it takes on a whole new perspective in light of where we're at with kids and what it is we're looking for them. So completely different context, but still same goals is what we're looking for out of the implementation of instructional technology. So it's the... Here's our belief statement. Maybe I can't change. I was going to tilt it towards you, but then it won't be on TV. And this is really what we're wanting to see kids doing over this period of time when they can't be. We want them engaged in great learning, making meaningful connections, taking some risks, and then celebrating their successes. And it's been interesting already. We've heard from families, parents, and some students that there have been successes already today. And one parent posted out there, "It's so great to see my child communicating with their teacher virtually over math class today. Would rather be there face to face, but this is a wonderful opportunity." So I showed this to you once before, so I'm just going to skip over that, I believe. Maybe 50 seconds, too. So whole new perspective. What do kids have on their Chromebooks now? So these are the tools that we're asking them to be utilizing in at-home functions now. So they got the Google Suite, Discovery App, WeVideo, so they can be making videos. So those are just some of the tools that our 612 students will be utilizing. And then on the iPad, these are some of the tools that we would be asking students to utilize in an at-home capacity right now. So with these, none of these tools up here are internet bound. So you could do many of the assignments without having to access the internet to create that. Now, getting the assignment to kids and posting the assignment, that's a challenge that we're working on for a group of our students and making sure we have that equitable... Oh, right to that. So we're working on that. But again, this is really the spirit. This is the goal of what we're wanting with kids. And when you think about the technology that we have, and I hope this doesn't change on me in 15 seconds, we want creation. And I'll show you an example of that versus content consumption. We want students engaged actively with a device, doing something instead of responding to what the device does with it. There's a place for that, but the majority of time should be that active cognitive engagement that increases the load on a student. So then, we also are going to have staff leveraging those highly effective instructional strategies. Feedback, for one. Can I get it to you immediately, even in the short term, and then follow up with more in-depth? Or is it turn your papers in, and I'll get back to you tomorrow with it? So we like them both, but that immediate piece is what we really strive for. Even at a surface level, gives kids a better idea than we'll wait for tomorrow. Jump in anytime here. You've seen the four Cs, and this is what we're striving for. And at one of our short cycle reports, you'll see the bright bites and what we're looking for, and some of the great gains that we've seen here in our four Cs with students. So I wonder if this is the one that I showed you. And it is not. So here is the example. Here's example number one of creation versus content. And this is a good example of an activity kids may or may not be engaging in today on application of the tools. So this is that great learning cognitive load. Students in 4th grade are studying maps. And this was earlier in the year with Mrs. Lawson. They created their own maps. And then they use the iWorks tools. And you can see they've green-screened themselves onto the different components of their maps. And that's the boy in front of the green screen. And then they're describing. They had a... They had an ORAC part of the project, where they had to talk through the different components of the map. So they take it from, yeah, I'll draw it and label it and turn it into, I'll draw it and label it, and now I need to explain it to you. And I'll put myself into that map. That's creation. That's asking kids to do something with the information. This would be an example, and I'll show you the website, of something content-based. Again, same map activity, but this is a website that is usable, and it is used in the district. But we would like to show you the difference between the two. So here is the website, and kids use it. So now they're studying maps again, right? So here, what it's saying is click on the Pyrenees Mountains. So that's the question. And if I highlight, let's see. If I go click there and I click... Nope, you're wrong. So you just keep going along. And now it's even flashing to me. Total content consumption. I really had to do nothing as a student versus the previous example where I had to be fully engaged in it. I had to be present and do something and be creative with it. And it gives it a little bit more of a purpose for it. So that's really the goal. So at home, over these days, is there a place for something like this? Sure. Would we rather have them doing things like before and utilizing that time and demonstrating learning? Yes, with that. Does that sound all right? With me? So then, another example. Coming back here. I believe I showed you this one, too. It was the critical thinking piece, where this is the child that would talk all the way through. So they get the same story problem, but now they're going to record themselves thinking about, talking about how they solve this problem. They're going to make their thinking visible to the teacher. And they're going to highlight and annotate on things and say, this is what I did. And you would actually see that 84 and the things that come with it. Same story problem, same math application, but they're using their tools to show you or make their thinking visible. Versus something like some of the math websites. And I can show you the example of Extra Math. Extra Math, Prodigy, Freckle, Xern. There's a number of sites. Good stuff. Good stuff. But what we'd rather have them using the device for is what you saw. Because if feedback is that quality that really engages... Oh, and I got timed out. Sorry about that. If we're looking for feedback... Grab one here and jump forward. So now, this is what happens. So it's just going to... And I can... Nope, nope. And it'll just wait, and I can just keep typing. And now it's actually showed me the answer. So I did it wrong. There was no feedback other than type in the 13. And then it gives me another one. Okay, so they're practicing math facts, right? That's what they're doing. They're trying to get automaticity. And there's a place for it. Now it's showing me the answer and I haven't done anything, so keep going. There's a place for it, but there's also that computational fluency and computational automaticity that you really need to examine your thinking around. So if we need kids doing fact practice.
I'm waiting for you to type in the right answer, so we can move on to the next question.
So it even yells at you, it's like, come on, get going. But there's a place for this, but maybe that's more the, the face-to-face do it with a partner, engage socially uh with it, instead of one-to-one with a machine that you really don't have to interact with. Uh, whereas the other way uh is something that we would be looking for kids to do. Let me show you a couple more examples, and then we can talk about how it's being applied uh today. Here, here's a great example, and this one comes from high school, so I showed you a couple of elementary-based ones. This is actually a stock market simulation, which will be really interesting right now. Uh, but this one comes out of West with Adam Allender. And it's a program, it's a simulation that he ran before, prior to Chromebooks. And it was all big binders and paper bound, and he took about three periods a week where kids were collaborating on it, and he lost three days of instruction a week, cuz he needed to provide them collaboration time. Once he gained access to uh the Chromebooks, he moved it all into Google Docs. And immediately gained three days of instruction back, cuz he said, hey, collaboration time is on your own, you can do it all online, you guys collaborate. Oh, and we're gonna lead and talk about this online. Lost all the paper binders and those kinds of things. So now kids as a group are working collaboratively, and you can see, uh, these are one of the different students, and there's actually names here, I just blocked them out for you. But this one logged in at eleven forty-three, this one logged in eleven forty-six, nine fifteen, seven thirty, eight AM, eleven twenty-three. So you can see, kids are now accessing this throughout, and it tracks who's interacting. And now they're working with one another to complete this aspect of it. So this again is something that's probably happening very similar to what's happening in high schools with these virtual learning days right now. A very collaborative, very meaningful project that would have been paper and pencil, now flipped this way and fits very nicely into this structure, and still keeps kids engaged socially and collaboratively and working together. And it gained instructional time for Adam, it eased his uh need to take all these things home and then delay his feedback, and it gives him the ability to provide immediate feedback just by accessing the document. Here's another middle school example, and I'll probably stop after this one, so we can talk about how these are fitting into our current plans today. But again, this one is coming up of uh John Muir, and it's an example of a project that has moved into a study of the Vietnam wars and war. And what uh students were doing as a collective class, they create one Google slideshow. But each small group is responsible for one component of that and summarizing it on a series of slides. So we have to work collaboratively together to create our component that builds into an entire class presentation and resource. So I'm still personally engaged, but we're working together to build a product that's for the greater good and not just the assignment. Whereas in the past, they may have done individual posters or research papers or things like that. And that's a good point, because they're all still having to do the research and the writing and all those things in the background, it just doesn't show up here. All of that information and research is gathered and then collaborated on and put here. Last one I'll show you. So here's a, well, maybe I'll show you one more after this. So this, this comes out of Wassa East.
Right, so basically an ionic bonding is the um, the bonding of a metal and a non-metal. So this is phosphorus, and this is aluminum. This one has a um plus three, this one has a negative three, so those two will be considered ionic bond. Okay, so this covalent is basically um like this carbon, wait, carbon? Carbon and nitrogen, this thing we consider cyanide because the electrons share each other, so.
I'm gonna stop her right there. I at least know that there are covalent and ionic bonding now from watching that. But that's out of the physics class at Mark Ikis' room. So instead of an exit ticket or something, every student, and what you could hear in the background is they were all doing their thirty-second explanations of ionic and covalent bonding, so that's why you heard it. They're using something called Flipgrid, and they post these minute, these short explanation videos, and then others can watch and provide feedback on it. But they're all doing different examples. So she's got the two uh elements there that she's doing, but somebody's doing something different. So now they've created this resource of study materials for everybody in the class to go back and utilize. There, if you're familiar with TikTok, the short thirty-second videos that people are putting out there and everything, that everybody's the rage. We don't have TikTok in the district, it's blocked. But what teachers are starting to do is they're challenging kids to create TikTok-like videos, summarizing a concept, and then they post it here on a flip, Flipgrid, uh kind of aspect with it. Again, something very easily done today in a virtual learning setting. So I'm not gonna make you go through the, the Quizlet example, so uh that teacher has chosen to have kids summarizing those concepts there. But also another way is to use something like Quizlet or Kahoot or those kinds of things, where you cycle through the flashcards and answer it. There's a place for that, we would like to see more of the previous one, having kids ingrained in that thinking. So I'm gonna stop there, cuz those are our goals, and I'll come back with some different examples. I, I wonder if you have any questions about any of these things.
John, what does the, the data show, because these are two very different delivery models. Right? What, what does the data show about one versus the other in, in any format, I guess?
That's a really good question. I don't think we've implemented it to a degree to say, this is the result. The data shows when you in, increase expectations and you increase cognitive engagement on the part of kids, their learning will go up versus a rote application of it.
Are there other districts throughout the country that have done this that we could? Or we?
I, I think that everybody's still in the process of blending in. I think it's not because, you're asking good questions, and I wanna explain it the right way. I think what you're seeing is one application of a learning strategy that's based in memorization or rote learning, that's going to get you this result. Versus another that's based in high expectation and cognitive load, it's a different learning strategy. So districts that use those types of learning strategies, to a greater degree, achieve higher. It's not because it's on the Chromebook or it's on the iPad, it's the strategy and the thinking that the instructor is wanting students to engage in. So that's the measure, the measure of those implementation of instructional strategies. These devices, the iPads and the Chromebooks, make it more accessible for students to do that kind of thinking. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. And, and my only follow-up to that would be, and this is probably a question for Jeff, is what, what are you seeing at the university level? Like, in my head, if you go to this, right, in the high school level, in a different format, and it's wonderful, is this Hollywoodbee experiment or experiencing learning in the university?
No, I mean, in general, the university doesn't do a lot of these kinds of things. There's a lot of people that have been doing things the same way for a long, long time in the universities. Um, it all depends on what you're teaching, and I think to go back to, 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 I think John was moving towards, is that you don't choose just one method and go with that a hundred percent. Depending on the skills, depending on the content you're working with, you're going back and forth between different methods. What I really liked in there is making the kids into the teachers, as we saw with the chemistry example. When I teach, I keep talking my students every day exhaustively about how everything we're doing is a matter of life skills. It's not just academic skills, you know. If the kids can be teachers, if the kids can speak publicly and speak on a camera like that, they can do an awful lot that most university students don't wanna ever do. Particularly Central Wisconsin students, they wanna be kind of part of the woodwork. And most of them have a hard time really getting out of their shells, and so this is, this is getting them used to the idea that that's what you're gonna do every day of your life as somebody with a, you know, first a high school diploma, and then of course with a bachelor's degree, you've gotta be a leader, and this is already putting them into that role, so this is really a good idea.
So, so earlier this week, or, or last week, we had the opportunity to meet with representatives from NTC and the chamber and talk about what it is that they're looking for out of, of students. And very much overall, they, they talked about the Fourth Industrial Revolution or Industry four point O and the need for soft skills, but the, the need to be able to speak publicly and communicate your thoughts and communicate your understanding, and the ability to, to do and apply the information. So I, I say that because they're wanting kids that can do this more than kids can answer that. They can do more with this skill than they can with a student that can just kick out nucleus, right? So it's, it's these kinds of things, trying to grow and uh grow kids to do that. And I think Jeff makes a good point, so I have two kids at UWASP who's now, according to them.
I'll tell you whether it's true or not.
Their professors are now trying to figure out, ooh, how do I move this course into an online format, right? So they're being challenged with, how do I take what I've always done? And, you know, some of them are getting help from the students, like, hey, help me get this into Canvas, hey, how do I do this? So that challenge is hitting all levels now. And uh, so you've got students helping professors to kind of move, and teachers here in the district that happens, all the way. But it still leverages those kinds of online platforms and experiences that kids will need.
So, John, um, I really, really love that chemistry example. And I think back to my own educational experience in the Wassa School District and how um different that would have been in, in a, especially kind of a challenging class. Because when you talk those concepts out, I mean, that's how I had to study for the bar exam, quite frankly, is you have to talk the concepts out, and it kind of helps uh that understanding. Um, but uh, we also have a lot of teachers that have been teaching in the district for a long time. Is there an expectation that all teachers implement some sort of, of this uh aspect? And uh, how's the balance on that? Because I will also say that I had amazing teachers in the school district, which is why I returned to raise my son here, so I'm not trying to.
And those are great points, and, and you're right, the district is filled with amazing teachers who have done great things. Obviously, I mean, look at the back wall there, and, and many people here. So their ability to teach and educate at a high level is, is, is not, not in question. I think what we're seeing is there's a shift in what we want kids to be able to do. So some of our content delivery and activities and things that we're asking kids to do, the way we did it before, might not be the best match for what we need out of students now, so it's, it's that kind of shift. Yes, at the high school level, at the secondary level, all four schools have had teams or even two teams go through a two-day blended learning training to start undertaking, how do we do more of these kinds of things? And they're well set. Uh, they've been working very hard throughout the years with its learning and things. So I, while there are some big gulps in what we have just started today, uh, our staff is very well, whether they feel it or not, they're very well positioned to begin those steps, to move forward. They should be more confident in their own abilities, but that's okay, cuz we've not done.
And they work really closely, I'm sure I've watched this over the last couple days in my own district, with their polit, professional learning communities, so that people are teaching each other and they're pulling it together.
Yeah, so, so, so they're also a good start, but yes, there's an expectation that we start moving content into more accessible fashions, um, that we start engaging kids in different ways, uh, but it's also that you're excellent teachers, and how do we help you blend those things?
Yeah, I guess to follow up on Pat's question a little further. Um, when I've looked at the textbook companies and seen what they had to offer in terms of online quizzing programs and such, they really look like they'd be great K-12, but not particularly good at the college level. Because often, often you have people, they're, they tend to be, well, you know, how do you define this? And then you run through the book and find the definition, and then plug it in. Or you locate things on maps, which is great for middle school and high school level and elementary to some degree. But when you get into the college level, it's really hard to do something like that and have it on the conceptual level that we work. So it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's, I think it's better suited at this level, and I think it could do great stuff at this level.
And another thing you did touch on was online discussions and how valuable those can be. Partly because some kids who don't think of something to say in the moment or need a little more think time, get that. And then the teacher has a record of every student's thinking.
Yes, and, and that's a, that's a critical part of it, because there is not, uh, I'm gonna make the assumption that there is not a two-year or a four-year institution that doesn't have some sort of learning management system that students are going to need to immediately be able to uh utilize and navigate. So if they leave us without an experience of how to utilize a learning management system, they're behind already. Uh, there are colleges and two-year pieces that are looking for kids to have mastered and completed an online course already. Because what a lot of them are finding is they've never, while they may have managed a learning, learning management system, they don't understand the full online course, and a lot of kids are not being successful because all of a sudden they get in and take a couple online courses and they have no concept of that. In fact, NTC has a whole kind of college one-on-one course, and you've gotta complete that in an online course before they'll let you get into the other online courses. And, and even, even industry, I know we were talking with one student, and he said, you know, I took a job at Best Buy, and before they'd even put me out on the store floor, I had to go through this entire content online course and demonstrate my knowledge of the products that I was going to have to be selling. And the student was reaching back to the teacher to say, thank you so much for making me get through that, cuz it made that process much easier. So if you think about that, even our own paraprofessional, what are they gonna be doing for the next two weeks somehow? Taking online courses. So it's that ability and the communication and how do you communicate in this world now with the different options uh, are the critical pieces of all of these experiences that help us position kids to be successful career, college, two-year, four-year.
One of the great things I've seen in online education is it forces the students to be more active in their own learning. You know, we get plenty of kids coming into university who made it through high school being passive and just absorbing enough in the classroom that they could survive. And of course, those skills won't, won't get you through your freshman year. Um, in an online class, it's, here's the readings, here's instructions, do it. And if they don't do it, they're sunk in the first week. Whereas they can maybe get by longer and longer in, in the classroom in college. And so I've seen the same students do much better online than they've done in my face-to-face classes, because they've had to read more carefully, they've had to think more carefully, they've had to be more active. One of the other things I really like about what you said about the uh chemistry example is the kids have been critiquing one another's work. My students generally don't like to critique each other's work. They, they feel it's harsh, they feel it's that, that they're just looking for mistakes, that they're being mean. And I mean, really overwhelmingly, Central Wisconsin kids have that problem, that they don't understand critique as a way to, to help somebody else. And so I keep having to say, if, if we can get them at these levels, thinking about how you get positive critiques, it's a big step forward.
And that's a great point, so, you know, maybe to, to wrap it up with this aspect, I'll bring you back to those fourth graders from Thomas Jefferson that you saw. They did the traditional report, paper and pencil. Uh, but then you talk about the ability to critique, so if we keep giving those students those kinds of experiences, we're working collaboratively and, and critiquing and editing each other is just a continual part, what will they be when they enter your class, and how much more collaborative and workforce-ready will they be to interact with a team if we keep giving them those opportunities?
And to that point, I mean, I've been teaching in online education for over thirteen years. One class, or one school, rather, is through Zoom, and two are asynchronous. But it's not just the critique that uh improves the person that's receiving the critique, but I think that the person giving it, it actually helps improve their skills.
Very much so. And, and that, that, that's a great point, and that's one that we talk with staff a lot about. In order, if you're gonna have kids editing and, and critiquing, they need to be very clear on what the success criteria is, and, and you want them giving accurate feedback, and the only way to do that is to understand.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for.
John, this is Teresa, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm wondering what you're having the um FIED and art and music teachers doing during this time. Are they gonna be able to post things? I know that some of the kids that I tutor in our homeschool programs have complete art and music programs, but then I'm hearing from a lot of parents after day one, their kids are stir crazy. I'm hoping that uh some of the FIED people can start posting ideas of, you know, um, you need to track how many uh steps you take today. Some parents are not very creative when it comes to ideas, so what's gonna happen on that front?
Well, Teresa, that's a great lead-in to the next topic, so we will fully answer that. Can we talk through kind of all the expectations and we'll cover that uh in the process, or do you want an immediate answer?
Oh, no, is it gonna be under the virtual learning days?
Yep, we'll get to that, and it'll bleed into, so Angie and I are gonna jump in and kind of cover them both here, cuz they're completely intertwined right now. So let me give you some of the background, and we will definitely get to those questions about where we're at. And so our, our process started for virtual learning days, or day, let me make it singular, day, uh, back in probably September. We surveyed staff initially about their knowledge base and support of it. Uh, we surveyed administrators, we followed up with a more in-depth survey to staff. Uh, we followed up with a parent survey, and I met uh with the student councils at all four secondary levels. So it's about a hundred and twenty students to get some feedback from. So the things that we're going to talk about here as far as expectations, and it was amazing how closely aligned those four groups were. Students were spot-on with their expectations of time of engagement, with staff, and parents were right on there. So the, the wonderful part about these expectations here and the things that you're gonna see, there was not a group that didn't already suggest that and endorse that. So with, with very little work, we just collected their results. So that, there's about a team of, uh, there are fifty people that volunteered, and any given time when we have a meeting, about thirty come back and help do this. Their charge, though, was to develop a format for one day that we could implement on an inclement weather day, or we may choose to implement it on a professional development day, to bank a day for a snow day. So their, their only context was, what's a good plan for if we got one day without students? So they had it all down, and what you're gonna see is what they had, and then this hit, and we quickly grew it into what we have now. So we had, that team provided a very well-developed plan, and what you'll see here are some of the beginning expectations. But first of all, as we go forward with our virtual learning that had started today, and it's. all, as we go forward with our virtual learning that had started today, and it's a start. So people are going to get a little stir-crazy, staff are getting their feet wet, students and parents, and we're going to get it up and rolling. The whole goal is support for students, providing them some learning activities, supporting them in this time, giving them a sense of normalcy, routine. There's something consistent. I'm still going to interact with my teacher, I'm still going to find a way to interact with my peers, and we're going to give you content from across the areas with it. It's not the intent to say kids are going to be locked in for eight hours a day. And in fact, if you're a high school student and you can pick up some hours and go work during the day and do your work at night, in this model, that's okay right now. Okay? If you need to care for your, your siblings during the day and help them with their homework, their schoolwork, because it's not homework anymore, their schoolwork, you can do yours at night. Or if you want to get up in the morning. So there's that flexibility with it. I'm getting a little ahead of myself. But with that, what we're really looking for at grades K through five is about 90 minutes of activity or engagement. So teachers are thinking in their head, in the areas of reading, math, and writing, how do I plan about 90 minutes of academic engagement? And that also includes the encore areas, Teresa. So encores are planning activities for an entire grade level each day. So one day, FIAID might plan the activity for all of fifth grade, the next day, they might have the one for all of fourth grade, whilst the librarians are planning for kindergarten, and the art teacher is planning for first grade. And it just rolls through the cycle. So one time a week in this format, everybody will get gym and activity, everybody will get art, everybody get a music, everybody will get a science, those kinds of things. So yes, daily, there should be an encore activity planned and available to students, Teresa.
Thanks.
Okay. So then at sixth grade, we're looking for two to three hours of engagement, and at nine, 12, we're, we're looking for three to four. Depending upon the program at the high school, you might get six. AP, IB classes, there's a lot of work. Others, it might be three to four. Some days, you might get two, because you're into a big project. Some days, you might get five. There are approximate planning guides. Teacher might plan 90 minutes, and my son will turn it into four hours worth of work. And that's okay, because it's designed for the students with that. So those are the general expectations of a student. And we want you completing these kinds of activities when it fits your family's schedule on a daily basis. We also are expecting that during this time, students are communicating, students are communicating with their teachers on a daily basis. It could be through the submission of an assignment, could be an online discussion, it could be an email, maybe it's a phone call that they're getting on, could be a CSO post, a dojo post. There's some level of student communication with the teacher to say, I'm participating and I'm engaged today. And if they, if they can participate or be engaged each day, we would count that as present in attendance. So, so we are tracking attendance here to say, you need to be engaged. And that was really the big word used by the secondary people. We don't necessarily need an activity every single day. We need an activity that covers time and we can monitor engagement with them. So if you hear, wow, attendance, yep, it's important. We need to support you. We need to keep track of you. We need to follow you. We need to know where you're at, because you're not in front of us every day anymore. And you do that by participating with that. So does that make, any, any questions on that aspect of what we expect out of our students? And they, K through, K will have a little less than 90 minutes, and they might be verbally tell the story that you just wrote into the iPad, record yourself and take a picture, the drew, the picture you drew to go with it. Might be, we were studying the number three, take three different pictures of three different groups of three, things like that, and add your thinking to it with that. We do have the ready curriculum online, and teachers can be assembling lessons that way, so kids can keep up with their math homework that way.
Wow, some of those kindergartners can talk a long time.
Yes, they can.
John, at the appropriate point, I'll have some questions for Judy, but you know, fit that anywhere it belongs in your presentation.
Okay. So with that, so that moves then into staff expectations on these, on these learning days, right? And what it is we want staff to be doing. And they were all built to make sure the student expectations were there, right? We want students completing and participating work on a daily basis. Staff are planning and preparing and delivering content on a daily basis with students. We talked about the attendance issue. Collaboration with people services and special education providers, and that might be to your question. And Judy's been really working and discussing with the other directors of special education throughout the state and the area. And we've been talking about this aspect since November. And you'll see that it's, it's one of the, the attendance for staff expectations, that their content and delivery address student IEP goals and needs. So that might be a modified assignment, that, that might be something, but we clearly need to address those needs. So part of the teacher expectation is you are meeting and collaborating virtually and discussing student need with that person's team, be it people services, be it the special education teacher. And in fact, I will tell you, there was many special education teachers and people services people that were involved in a Google Meet today with Melissa Piat saying, hey, here's how we can use this tool to engage our students in learning about that. So very proactive and a very needed component of this plan, and one that is very independent to students who we need to, to figure out. And with that, we're also, there's assessments in there. So in some form or fashion, there's assessment should be taken and some level of grading, because in this period, the work they're doing now at home is going to feed a quarter in a semester grade. This isn't just time off of grading. It's a different, we've got to tackle that issue, but it's grading, and it's important, and it's going to count. Then the other thing is, and our staff was awesome today. Can't tell you how many teachers just took the day to call families and make connections and say, hey, we got it, we'll do it. Or they did it through email. That was the focus of today. This is all new. Let's start and let's make it together. So when I talk to, first, our goal is supporting students. A big component of our teacher expectations is communication with kids. And it could be face-to-face, virtually, or by the phone, or however you need to do it. But you need to stay in contact with them. Anything that we're on that?
What happens when you have such a large number of students? Like at the elementary, you may have a class of 25.
Yeah.
But at the middle school, maybe you've got 130.
And I think that's an awesome question. And that's one where I think we, we, we throw it back to those secondary people and say, what is the best way for you to communicate? And certainly, there will be some mass messages or collaborative conversations, or the Google docs. And what we would expect teachers to do is, is offer those communication opportunities. But that's, that comes back to that attendance piece, who's engaged and who's participating, who's not? That's the student I need to reach out to.
Okay. Is there some way that we could use the aides to help those teachers, those massive numbers?
That's a good lead-in to our principal expectations that I'll get to. So that's up there.
Well, I, yeah, I have a related question to the previous one. What about our students that don't have a supportive household? So you try to make those communications and you're just not being able to establish that communication.
So those are good questions that lead into principal expectations. And we've got those. So I will say, you know, today, Andy Grimm and the people services team were right on, on that aspect of it. So I'm going to jump down to the third bullet, fourth bullet there. Create a list of students and family contacts for building our professionals or people services staff to connect with on a daily basis if necessary. So we identify those kids, and we immediately start finding the right person to reach out and connect with them as often as possible. Could be daily, could be weekly, could be every other day. But we recognize there is going to be a, a series of that. And it may be for some, just more communication back out to families. And if we're not getting any response, then we'll have to figure out what's the best course forward. I want to say, we'd probably go to the house. I don't know if that's an option right now. But, but clearly, we're, we're planning and tracking and we understand there's a, there's a group of kids we need to pay close attention to in front of our lives. I know Angie's already involved in that and has had a few things today that have popped up along those lines.
And I think we're lucky with having Gaggle in place, because anytime a concerning email is sent, we, it pops up right away. So I actually had to call the police department to go do a welfare check. And we did that within a minute of that Gaggle had come in through.
So, so with Angie's helping people services, we're, we're doing our best to at least start, here, here's our plan. Now, what it needs to morph and grow into in this time might be slightly different, but that's our initial thought on it. But paraprofessionals and those, those people that we have available that work with kids can start reaching out to. We'll leave that up to the building principals to identify those best people. So we've talked about student expectations, staff expectations, and now we'll lay out a little bit of what we would see building principals doing to ensure that first and foremost, students and families are being supported. Some sort of daily communication with faculty. It could be a quick five, 10-minute faculty meeting. It could be a weekly faculty meeting. We'll leave that up to the principal. But they need to be keeping in contact with their faculty, just like we want faculty keeping in contact with their kids. We, we are asking principals, take a look at IT's Learning course content, or wherever people have content posted, give them support, give them suggestions, give them help, make sure it's meeting the needs, and see if they need some help. One of the things that we're going to ask principals to do is just keep IC open all the time. I know at times, for, for valid grading reasons, we would close the parent portal at times around grading periods. I think in this situation, we want to leave it open and give people access all the time, because it's a much more fluid aspect. Again, we want to make sure that that content is being posted and supported, and it's consistent and it's meaningful for students. So just following up on that. Plan and monitor work for your hourly employees. We want to take care of them and make sure that our principals are planning things and making, helping them ensure that that's getting done. Flexibility is on there, because like we started, what we plan for today could change with somebody's announcement tomorrow. So we need to understand that any plan we put in front of staff or families is, is a fluid thing. It can change depending upon what we need to adapt to. And then there's some also bullets on there about how they can work with department chairs and leaders and things that they can be doing within their building to help support staff as we support students with that. So from where we started in November to the things you just heard today, that's really our continuity of learning plan, is what DPI is calling that. And it started with a very good group of people, teachers and administrators, that said, we can do it for one day. They actually built the plan that with very little modification, we feel pretty confident in rolling out for a prolonged period of time.
How are you handling tech support when kids have problems with their technology?
That's a great question. So what we have right now is the four integrationists, we're busy all day long. They've published their phone numbers and, not their phone numbers, their emails and Google chats to staff. And said, reach out, we're here, we're going to help you. They're working remotely from home to simulate what staff are working on, so they didn't come here. They were busy all day. And so staff was very positive and very forward-looking and just needed some help with a few things. Tomorrow morning, a communication will be going out to all districts saying, here's how you contact your building-level tech aids, and here are ways that you can get support. We have internal helplines that people can call. We've created a, there hadn't been a public-facing phone number, but we've created a public-facing phone number that we will put out there so staff can call in from home, and then we'll make it available to, to parents. But when parents run into, and the other, the most important part, when parents and students run into issues, be it access or content, we're going to direct them back to the classroom teacher, because they will have the best idea of what the assignment was and what the expectation is. And if that teacher needs tech help, they will have the right contacts to get to. It won't be as immediate, like it's 10 minutes or less is our goal when people are in district. Might be a little bit longer, but our goal is to get it all solved.
But if it's something like, my email's not working, or something like that.
Yeah, if the email's not working, then we'll get on that. And we've got our building techs are still back, our district-level techs are still back at MOPs. We have our full complement of support. It's just turning them into more public-facing supporting factors. So, but that's there. And that's right.
So to get back to the special ed, you know, that's something we're concerned with, with our students with accommodation problems. And I think in the, in the great gamut, what, what we have are relatively easy cases to deal with, more time on exams, that kind of a thing. But there are some students who really need to direct almost one-to-one attention for things to seek, and they need to be seated face-to-face. Particularly with our students with, with EBD issues, can we send devices home with them and do face-to-face with teachers or paraprofessionals? Is that part of the plan going forward, or?
Our special ed students, no matter what their disability, EBD included, have had taken devices home. Yes.
Okay, so that's there.
Yes.
And in, you know, if we, if we can't get those students to interact over the devices, and particularly, as Tricia mentioned, the cases where they don't have strong support at home, you know, at, at what point do we end up with those students in danger of being truiled? You know, is that something that we're foreseeing as, as a problem we might run into?
No, but that's where people services comes in, or any, any teacher or parent who has a relationship with a child, calling them if they're not getting on the device, making that connection with them, checking in with them daily, and then getting, working on the device on academics. I'll be honest, I'm truly more worried about our students' social and emotional well-being right now than I am about academics. So first and foremost, we're going to make those connections with them and make sure they're okay and they're safe where they're at, and then get them working on the virtual learning plan.
And many times, our special ed teachers, they'll be checking in with these kids daily. They have that connection with EBD or whatever, that they, they want. And also with the parents.
Yep.
What? And also close connections with the parents. Yes, they have that. And so we're going to be keeping that going as much as we can. And with, with all this being done, we're, we still have kids that slip. And are we thinking about possibly beefing up our summer school this year to help these kids that have slipped? To get them up and running?
I, I think that we are always planning summer school. I think that we would approach summer school the same as we have with, with others, with other years in plan. It, it much depends upon timeframe and a lot of things.
Because right now, this isn't a very long thing. But it's, considering what's happening in other countries and how poorly it was handled when it started here, this could very well go on for quite some time.
I'm, I'm very, very, very optimistic that we won't have many problems of kids at the elementary level, because, at any level. But when you're asking these questions, I'm thinking very young learners, engaging with content. I, I think the activities that will be put out there in front of them and the engagement level will prove to be very high. When Joe Marshall did it, they had a really high percentage of engagement. And I know teachers are already interacting with their students online already. So I, I'm very hopeful about that. And it's a different type of work. It's a different atmosphere. I think having, kids having some more control over it can do it on their time when they feel like it.
Some kids might blossom more.
So, but I, but I think that part of making sure or doing our best to make sure the kids don't slip by monitoring and tracking and taking that attendance piece is a critical factor in that.
You know, just for perspective, actually shortly before this meeting, I had a conversation with a coworker who is in San Diego. And after our meeting, she was asking, you know, she said, oh, our schools are closed today, too. Theirs happened to be closed today. And I said, I'm just curious, what are you guys doing? You know, there's all these emails that I was getting about virtual learning. The answer is nothing. And they have four weeks, a minimum of four weeks, where they're, and, and her children are elementary. It's shut down. I said, so you don't have, you know, these online things or whatever? Nothing.
Yeah.
And, and I was sharing with her just the bits and pieces that I knew about what we were doing. And she was dumbfounded. She's like, that's amazing. And she's, she's like, you know, my husband and I are trying to figure out what we're going to do with three elementary age kids for four weeks.
Yep.
To keep their, you know, to keep their minds going. So it was just kudos to all of you and everybody else who's been working on this. I guess I never, maybe I took it for granted in terms of how quickly this was able to get rolled out, but awesome job.
It's a monumental feat.
Yeah. And we don't often get to tout our successes versus the Europeans. But I said in Germany, it's five weeks off, and so. if I studied Germany, it's five weeks off, and so far, at least what I've heard, nothing planned. They're just gonna sit for five weeks and play video games. And so we're, you know, we're out of a lot of people.
Maybe they're gonna take that time off and turn it into, that was your summer vacation, and during the summer, you're gonna be in school.
No, you would, you would not get staff to change their schedules in Europe. I wanna reiterate that this is really remarkable, and you all have put a lot of work into this, and that this is a great teachable moment for the students and for the staff, and then all the way up to administration, because this isn't the last time we're gonna have a crisis of this sort.
And we appreciate that.
Learning how to do it now is very important.
And it, and it truly has been a very collaborative effort. I mean, there is nothing in this plan that hasn't been run through multiple groups of stakeholders, but it's the way the staff has embraced it and jumped into it. We kinda crammed to say, oh, maybe we won't be there on Monday, so we crammed, and the staff just did everything they could, and they were doing trial online stuff Friday, and then we got word like, okay, you can stay open through Wednesday, and everybody took a big breath and said, oh, good, now we've got three days to really prep it for it? And then again, it got out of the way and it was like, bang, well, nope, we're doing it Monday, and staff just picked it right up and did it. So it, it, it is everybody in this district, and you haven't even heard, this is just the academic portion of it, and that, so I'm gonna get out of the way unless you have more questions, I'll let Angie and the others fill in. Other things?
Sure, yeah. I mean, when I wrote this, this plan with the help of many other people around the room two weeks ago, I didn't anticipate that we would have gone through it this quickly, but we have. So we're here now, we're in the school closure part, but recovery will come next. We don't know when that will come, but we know it's going to come. Currently, we're working on getting our children fed, so we have a plan that will start on Wednesday. Karen has been working very hard on that, and I don't know if we've heard yet of our contract.
Yes, we said to.
Ooh. Perfect, perfect. Okay, so we can move forward with our food plan. Something that we wouldn't have initially done, but now would like to do, is to serve food next week during spring break because we know that food may be running low by that point. So we're currently looking for donations or anything like that where we can buy extra food and serve it next week as well. We'll continue to have, and Karen has a whole plan that she can show you guys where, where the sites that we're going to be serving food. We're also looking for those neighborhoods where we know kids would be home maybe alone and their parent can't come pick up food, so we would go and do drop offs. So we're depending on the social workers, counselors, and principals to identify those families right now. That's what they're gonna be spending their efforts on tomorrow. Then once, once we do reopen schools, you know, we have to anticipate that our students and our families will probably need a lot of support, especially if our students and families have lost family members to this pandemic. That will be a whole nother plan we need to get in place at that point, and that's when the Maryland County Health Department says that we can reopen. If you watched the presentation by Trump earlier today, you're, you know that he's thinking it's probably going to be sometime this summer that we would be able to do recovery. So we're looking at a very long-term plan at this point.
And then I have a concern about our hourly employees, and I think we should consider as a board sending a letter to Governor Evers and request that the wait time to collect unemployment be waived, and that the requirement to look for a new job because these people have jobs would be waived, so that if we do go into a long-term mode of not having school, that our employees are not left high and dry, that they can collect unemployment and collect it right away.
Isn't that being handled on a national level right now?
Well, it's been, Congress voted on a plan, but the Senate will not even.
I thought they were voting on it today.
I heard that they weren't gonna talk about it, but it wouldn't hurt for us to take the step in case it doesn't happen there.
I believe that we won't be in that position yet. We've been working on ways in order to keep our employees working and paying them versus having them not being paid and being in a position to collect unemployment.
Yeah, well, that's ideal. I'm just talking about, it's nice to have something in the works in case the worst happens, that we're taking care of our people and we aren't trying to get it together at the last minute. Because the representatives down in Madison have quit for the year, they're not, they're done for nine months. Tony would have to call them back to vote on this. So to get the idea out there and to ask for them to step up and do this isn't gonna be a quick process.
I believe it would help in order to ask for them to expedite the process, however, they will not have to look for a job as long as when they put in their request for unemployment, the question will be, are you anticipating returning to work? And if they say yes, they're not required to look for another job.
I didn't know that because I've never had to go through that process. But it would also help our parents who are gonna be, and they're gonna be let go and they're not gonna have a paycheck.
Could we have periodic updates, you know, every two weeks or once a month or something on how well we're doing in keeping everybody fully employed?
Yes. We, I'm not sure how we track that, Tammy. I suppose, would that be individual requests, or how do we monitor something like that? Do you know?
Well, we're going to be paying our hourly staff as if they are going to be working.
Yep.
Then we have, we've created a, basically an electronic Google timesheet is what I'm gonna call it. So then our employees then, every day will have to submit that. So let me back up and say, the first step is that right now, our schools are open, the staff can go to school and continue the work. Principals have a, a fairly good-sized list of things they're gonna have their staff do at the schools. That could be some designated activities that we have recommended, or principals say, you know, I've always had this project and I've been waiting for some time to do it, I'm gonna have the staff engaged there. Now, some staff may not be able to go to school, or they may not feel comfortable, maybe they're worried that they would go and, and get sick if they go, or they can't go because of daycare issues. So then if someone is at home, we have a whole plan again for them to work from home. A, a big part of that includes online training through, we have two different online platforms, and there are hundreds of hours of training. And the principal can even steer them to, okay, I want you to do this training first, so that, that might be something directly related to the job they're in, and there are a lot of different options for that. And so anytime someone is gonna be working from home or doing one of those projects, then they'll complete this online electronic form and say, here, here's what I did, and this is the hours that I, that I completed, that I did that for an entire day. One of the examples is Leader in Me that Angie talked about earlier. We have a book, and we've been introducing this, but primarily to our certified teaching staff, so we're gonna offer that as an option that principals can talk to their paraprofessional staff. Even our food service and our custodial staff, we want everyone to be involved in Leader in Me. They can read the book, and there's a study guide that goes with the book, and then we're allowing up to 40 hours to complete the reading of that book and the study guide because everybody reads and studies at a different level, some of those things in time there. Then, having said all of that, if someone says, I, I don't wanna do online training or I can't, maybe I don't have a computer, maybe I don't have internet access, they can use benefit time, or even breaking the rules on benefit time because you can use your sick time even if you're not sick, but you can use that benefit time that's available to you. You can do all of those things before you would get into a situation of leave without pay. We're trying to offer them every opportunity that we can to pay them.
And benefit time isn't just sick time, they can use their personal time, if they have vacation time, they can elect which type of leave that they want to take, and again, that would be reported on this Google doc that they will be feeding to us, that we would enter then into Skyward.
So we're pretty confident that through the end of the normal school semester, we have everything covered.
Yeah. Along those lines, I just wanna make sure the board is aware and make sure we're on the same page. There is, there are a couple of districts who have just said, we're gonna pay our hourly staff their regular rate regardless of work or anything. As we've been talking about it, there's two reasons I think we wouldn't go that route. One, it's taxpayer dollars, and I, I hate to say we're spending taxpayer dollars for, with, with no return on that investment. Secondly, the, if we, if we went that route, we still need some people to keep working. So if we're paying them for working and we're paying others for not working, it just doesn't feel equitable. And so with all of the opportunities we've offered, I hope the board's comfortable, the fact that we're going to ask them to do things, right, in order to earn that pay. We wanna be generous, right? We, you know, we wanna, our goal is to make sure the staff know that we really value them, we don't want this to hurt them financially, but we aren't gonna pay them for doing nothing.
No, well, that was my concern, was that they had a paycheck coming in. I think it's much, much better that they're doing something for it because I'm sure that they would probably prefer that in the long run.
And not just doing something, we're building our skills, and it's stuff that we wanted them to do for a long time, but there's never time and there's never money. So now the silver lining with all of this is that they have the time to do this, and we can still pay them and make sure their family is financially stable.
And in a calming way.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that you explain in such detail. That's fantastic.
Good, thank you.
And this is Teresa again, can all of you hear me?
Yes.
I think it's a great idea, and I think it's very commendable because I've been having people ask me what their loved ones are gonna be doing for a paycheck. I've got one other question with this planning update. I saw today that the Middleton Plain School District is discouraging that they can't mandate that their staff not go on spring break, and that if they do, they're letting them know that when they come back, that if they go to certain zones that might be extremely dangerous, and they've been there on their vacation, and they come back, that they're gonna have to do a 14-day voluntary seclusion. Have we talked about any of that, where staff have been traveling all over the country on spring break?
Yep, we sent out, we sent out a communication about that last Wednesday, already Tuesday, last Tuesday, that if they go to a level three area, they have to self, self-quarantine for 14 days after they get back.
It may not be a level three when they get there, it may be a level three when they leave.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. If, if you don't mind me just, you've already congratulated a bit, but I mean, everybody here has done a wonderful job in terms of plan development, communication ahead of, of the crisis. So yeah, really proud of, of the group and, and the principals today, and the teachers. It's, I mean, really, this crisis is a, an opportunity to really kinda show the value, you know, and the dedication of our people, so I'm very, very proud.
Teresa and I backed out of going to the national convention because I don't wanna be in Chicago during this.
No, I'm incredibly impressed too, and thank you so much to everybody that's done the work and, and the many, many people that are not in this room. And Jane, to your question earlier about summer school, you know, I'm not, that's a great question, but I'm not concerned about that because I know we're just trying to get through day by day, and I know that when we get to that point, because we have such amazing people here, we will, we will come to whatever, they'll, they'll have that solution for us. So I, I have a lot of confidence, and thank you very much for all of this work to pull this together so that our students can continue on with their education.
Mm-hmm. Welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for that, and with that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Social distancing, everyone.